Good evening and welcome to the September 14th, 2023 Select Board Meeting. We have our, tonight we have with us our, you're the clerk right now, right?
I am.
The clerk, Erin, see what happens when you move it off Monday, it all falls apart. Our clerk, Erin Underhill.
And our vice chair, Ellen Rosenfeld and myself.
So, welcome tonight. We have a moderately sized agenda. It's not huge, so we'll see what we can do to move through this, get the important points covered. We'll start with a few announcements. There is going to be a survey coming out shortly, an online survey on the MBTA 3A Community Housing Survey. For those of you that are familiar with this, and those of you that are not, there is a new requirement by the state that we set aside a certain amount of land for buy right, high-density zoning housing. It doesn't mean they have to be built, that doesn't mean we are building them at all, it's no cost to the town, and it doesn't mean it needs to be open space. It can be any place in town. We can overlay existing neighborhoods, we can overlay large parcels of land that are, you know, industrial or whatever, we can do overlay districts. So this survey will give us a chance to ask the community, online, it's not an in-person, what their thoughts are on how this should be done and what they would like to see happen. It's a requirement that we, it's coming close to mandatory that we do it, but we can design it in a sensitive way that I think is beneficial to the town and still meets all the needs. Second announcement I have is the FEMA Flood Insurance Map. An appeal period, there are new flood insurance maps out. They are available on the town website. I think the sites where they are, I think the link is there on the website. So go to the town website, look for the flood insurance maps. And there's a period of appeal if you feel that they may be an error, I imagine, that's what says appeal. But you can contact our Robert Weiss, Millis Economic Development Planning Director, if you have questions about that. I threw you right out there, Bob. All right. Oh, please, go.
Thank you for doing both of those announcements, Mr. Chairman. The only thing I wanted to add was regarding the appeals. The town is required to do, to make appeals on behalf of its residents, any individual residents. The, and I'm going to quote from the notification that we received, that the only appeals that are supported by scientific and technol, and technical data can be considered. So folks who do want to appeal are going to, probably should give me a call and find out exactly what that means. But that's directly from FEMA, and I just wanted to make sure folks are aware of that.
Thank you. The third announcement is on October 24th, from noon to eight, is it this? From noon to eight, there will be an election in town for the Tri-County School Project. We are going to schedule, and we'll talk about this later in the meeting, a time for a forum with the Select Board and possibly somebody from Tri-County. We'll try to get them to come out to do it as well. But this will be a vote to build a new Tri-County School. The price tag is somewhat north of $280 million for the project, close to 300. And this is divided, there's 12 towns in the district?
Eleven.
There are 11 towns in the district. So on October 24th, from noon until eight, and that's not our choice, the law requires that you have at least four, but not more than eight, hours of voting on this subject. So we're going with the full eight, and we picked the time that we thought made sense the best. But the majority of the people that vote, not the majority of the towns that vote, but the majority of the people that vote, will determine whether this new school is built. We'll go into some more details on this later in the agenda, but I wanted to get the word out often about this. It's a large amount of money. The town will be assessed the cost of construction, works out to about $12,000 per year per child that we send. It's a little different than most overrides. If we send 10 children, it's $120,000. If we send 50 kids, it's five times that. So it's all variable, and it's variable every year. But there will be a vote to authorize the construction coming up on October 24th, and as we get later in the agenda, we will be discussing whether we add an override to that same election, not the same ballot, but at that same election time, to secure funds to pay our share of the load, should it pass in the district. Anybody else like to care to add anything at this point about that, or? Okay.
Lisa Harden, Town Clerk. I just want to add that there will be absentee voting. So if you aren't able to come in from 12 to eight, you can do it by mail. And if there's a second election that will, on the same day, that would also be by, you could also do it by mail. But you have to apply for an application, a ballot. We need your signature on something.
Okay. So it's an application process to get the ballot?
Mail to you, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And just the other comment, in terms of the hours, all of the towns had to have the same hours, so all 11 towns agreed on the 12 to eight.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. Let's move on to the vote to open the Fall Town Meeting Warrant.
Hold on, that's my cue.
It is. We all looked at you.
I moved at the board vote to open the Fall Town Meeting Warrant for the meeting scheduled on November 6th, 2023, for a period of two weeks, ending on September 28th, 2023, at 4:00 PM.
Second.
Moved and seconded to open the Fall Town Meeting Warrant from, for the meeting on November 6th, 2023, for a period of two weeks, ending September 28th, 2023, at 4:00 PM.
Discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. All right. Library proclamation, an anniversary celebration. Can't believe it's been 10 years. So.
I can't believe it's been 40 years since the Friends.
Yeah.
I was a founding member.
There you go.
I'm representing the Friends in the library.
Would you like to speak about that for just a moment?
Yeah.
Please, come on up to the mic.
At 94 Dover Road. I'm speaking about a wonderful celebration. We're celebrating 40 years of the Friends of the Millis Public Library, and I was a founding member back in 1983. So we're going to have some very interesting documents on display at the open house, we're having a children's entertainer. State Representative James Arena DeRosa is going to be presenting a proclamation. I've invited State Senator Becca Roush and Congressman Ockingkloss as well. And we're trying to get the word out, Karen Demazal has done a great job, and we're just trying to get the word out, Erica from the schools. And so we're trying to, you know, get the word out so everyone knows, because it's really going to be a great time. We're going to have a scavenger hunt, and we really want to highlight the, all the services that the Millis Library offers that a lot of people might not be aware of. Like, if you need a telescope, no problem. Even if you need a canopy, no problem. And the Library of Things has a lot of, you know, just about everything you can think of. And the library's just not books anymore. It's really a lot more. Yeah, I've been a librarian for 40, almost 47, seven years part-time. I'm employed by the Town of Concord, and we're doing 150th anniversary.
Yeah.
So a lot of anniversaries in October, but this is really going to be a real special event, and we've been planning it for a long time, and we'd really like to have a lot of people turn out, because we really want to make people aware of. The main thing is, yeah, to say, you know, with the Friends, we've been great helping to raise money for the library and providing like fund fairs and stuff for the community. The last day of school was a big thing for a few years. The COVID kind of stopped that. And we really, and we really hope to see a lot of people come out for the, for the open house. And this is really going, I think, really going to be a wonderful event, and we've been, we've been planning a long time. I can't believe it's this close, you know, all of a sudden. And of course, I grew up, I grew up in Millis and going to the library, you know, various locations. And, you know, we want to continue to promote reading and collaboration with other artistic and educational organizations, the schools and the cultural council, and over the years we have. And we want to, we want to continue this, but really to make people aware of what the Millis Library means to the community is one of the main, when I first came up with this idea, when I looked at the calendar and saw the history, you know, what dates were coming up, I just figured, I mean, I just really wanted to do something about, because we have like handwritten minutes from the very, excuse me, the very first meeting, very first Friends meeting, they'll be on display. And so, you know, we really want, we're just hoping that everyone comes out and really, you know, learns more about the library if they don't already, because we're having a scavenger hunt and children's activities and lots, lots of fun stuff and get to, get to, you know, meet a lot of different people. We invited some past friends to, okay. So basically, I have, I don't know if we would like any flyers about the event. This is like, like this thing we're also using as an invite, it's also a flyer, some of you may receive.
I got, I think I got one.
Yeah, we do have copies.
I got one a couple days ago in the mail. I'll be there.
So, all right, it's Saturday, October 14th, from 10 to 2?
10 to 2.
Yep.
The presentations and like, there's going to be time for remarks like, like around noon time.
Okay. Perfect.
We're also, I forgot to mention this, I'm going to, I'll wrap this up real quick. We're going to be showing like, like on the, on the board, the reminiscences of some people that couldn't, can't be there, because I've contacted everyone that I knew where they were in the Friends. And, but there's going to be a lot of pictures of all the stuff we've, all the wonderful things we've done over the last, the last 40 years.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
See you.
I am going to be at my other niece's wedding that day. They lumped them all together within a four-week period, making my brother-in-law ecstatic.
I'll take pictures.
So, take pictures for me.
I will be there. I will be there to read the proclamation.
So, thank you, so we'll have, we'll grab some of you too, that's great.
And with that, would you like me to read the proclamation?
I would like to hear the proclamation.
Okay. The Friends of the Millis Public Library is an organization that was founded in 1983 and has provided 40 years of service to the library and has been an integral part of our community. Whereas, the Friends of the Millis Public Library is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization dedicated to support and enhancement of library services through the use of funds from membership dues, book sales, and special fundraising events to purchase museum passes, support year-round programming, and augment library services and infrastructure. Whereas, the Friends of the Millis Public Library has sponsored programs and activities for all ages, including author talks, craft programs, children's entertainment, music concerts, movies, a memory cafe, and so much more. Whereas, the Friends of the Millis Public Library has been at the forefront of technological development since the 1980s, including providing up-to-date computer equipment. Whereas, the Friends of the Millis Public Library has promoted literacy and reading through support of programs such as the Summer Reading Program in Millis Reads, and do offer an annual scholarship to a deserving Millis High School senior who has demonstrated advocacy of literacy and reading. Whereas, the Friends of the Millis Public Library has tirelessly advocated for the needs of the library, including sponsoring two major fundraising campaigns, Automate by 98, which enabled the library to join the Minuteman Library Network, and a capital campaign that enhanced the building's interior. Whereas, the Friends of the Millis Public Library has continually helped bring the community together through special events, including the Last Day of School Fun Fair, the Royal Wedding Tea, a novel occasion, and seasonal events including ice cream socials, summer entertainment, and presentations honoring the history of Millis. Whereas, the Friends join the community in celebrating the 10th anniversary of our acclaimed library building dedicated in 2013. Therefore, we ask all citizens of Millis to join us in celebrating the Friends of the Millis Public Library's 40th anniversary and proclaim Saturday, October 14th, 2023, as Friends of the Millis Public Library Day. Respectfully, the Select Board.
Okay. Thank you.
My motion?
Yes.
I moved that the board vote to adopt the library proclamation as written and to declare Saturday, October 14th, 2023, as Friends of the Millis Public Library Day.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adopt the proclamation and to declare the, I moved the page. Saturday, the 14th, as, October 14th, as Friends of the Millis Public Library Day. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Now we have some appointments, but not as many as we thought. So, we'll start with the member of the Board of Assessors.
Mr. Chairman, in your packet is an email from Terry Gonzo, our principal assessor, letting the board know that the Board of Assessors met recently and is recommending Joy Riquito for the open board seat on the assessors. And she happens to be the retired Medfield Town Accountant, so she certainly has a lot of experience in municipal finance, and I believe that she'd be a great addition to our Board of Assessors.
Okay, fantastic. Take a motion on that appointment?
Yep. I move that we appoint Joy Riquito to the Board of Assessors for a term ending June 30th, 2026.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Joy Riquito to the Board of Assessors for a term ending June 30th, 2026. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Passed unanimously.
Vice Chair.
Yes.
Lisa Harden, Board of Assessors. I just wanted to make a comment that we had two great applicants. Joy Rashudo was one, and the other one was Sarah Wenzel, and they were both terrific, but we went with the one who had a little more municipal experience. But I just want to give the Board and the Town Administrator's Office a comment about Sarah Wenzel, that she would, she's also interested in being on other committees, and I think she'd be a terrific addition to our town. Thanks.
Great. All right, we have one more appointment, and that's the Sealer of Weights and Measures.
Mr. Chairman, as the boards are aware, we've been working on the transition to move to a regional sealer of weights and measures. We've been in discussions with the towns of Medway and Medfield for a number of months, and the Board will be discussing and voting on an intermunicipal agreement with the towns of Medway and Medfield later in your meeting. But as part of that process, Medway is the lead community, and that'd be a Medway employee who would be the actual sealer of weights and measures. But because it's an official role and they have statutory authority, it's necessary that that person be formally appointed by the Board for the town of Millis. So therefore, I'm requesting that the Board appoint Erica Robertson, an employee of the town of Medway, as the Sealer of Weights and Measures for the town of Millis for a term ending on June 30th, 2024.
Is that the motion? You want the motion?
I want the motion.
I move that we appoint Erica Robertson as the Sealer of Weights and Measures for the town of Millis for a term ending June 30th, 2024.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Erica Robertson as the Sealer of Weights and Measures for the town of Millis for a term ending June 30th, 2024. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
All right. Now the fun part, we get a acceptance of a gift check for softball scoreboard. So.
Nice.
Mr. Chairman, I believe Ms. Smith is here this evening to present the information.
So, I've been working with Derek Finney in the town, and in memory of my husband, who was on the Select Board in FinCom, we'd like to donate a Millis softball scoreboard to the town of Millis in the amount of $6,500. And with, look, we have some fundraising that is finishing the payment for the solar option of that scoreboard, and we have a group that is offering to install the softball for the town, the scoreboard for the town as well. And this started as my daughter's senior project, and as a 2020 grad, obviously, senior projects got halted in their track on, on March 13th, which was Senior Skip Day, and it would never, unfortunately, was completed. And obviously, with the passing of my husband, he loved this town, and he especially loved the softball program, and we'd like to do this in his honor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Give me that. No.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. I move that the board accept the donation from Beth Smith in the amount of $6,500 to be used towards the purchase and installation of a softball sports scoreboard at Town Park.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to accept the gift, and I just want to say, I worked with Chris on the Finance Committee for a lot of years, and this is really appreciated. Thank you very much. Yeah. Yeah, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I negotiated my first HCA with Chris Smith.
There you go.
He was the rep, remember?
That was before my time.
Oh, you weren't me, that was Aspen Wall.
Yeah.
Yeah, he was the rep. It was, it was great working with him.
Yeah, I spent a lot of years working with him, it was good.
Yes.
Yeah. All right.
Uh-oh.
Yep.
All right. But it's our favorite subject.
It is.
P-Fest.
I'm talking about P-Fest almost every day this week, so this is good, you know?
And we'll be talking for many more years. So, just gonna be, I'll give a quick update on the paving. I know it's not part of the schedule, but I think we all noticed that Acorn Street and Village Street have complete. Everything was pushed back because of the rain. We just finished paving Village, and the heavens opened up, so we had to stop yesterday. So tomorrow, they will finish off Spring Street, and as a pot of spring was already done, and I think most people can see that Plain Street, half of that was done. But working as the Town Administrator told me, I had to play and be nice with everybody. We stopped for the schools so the buses could get in and out, and I think that's all gone very well. I don't think there's been many complaints from the schools. I think the crew, police, and everything have been very, I meant it up to the buses coming in and out, which was great. The sidewalks will start first thing Monday morning, not much, even if it rains Monday, they could still have to compact that area and get that all ready. And again, the DPW did a yeoman's work on prepping that area and saved, you know, tens of thousands of dollars for, you know, the project. I can tell you that people seeing the sidewalk going in, there's a lot of interest of, why aren't I getting a sidewalk?
Yeah.
And I have a feeling we're going to be hearing from a lot of people about, why am I not getting one also? And I tried to just briefly explain that, I mean, the sidewalk, when it was built, it was supposed to go someplace a long time ago. I mean, we brought sidewalks from Village Street, and we brought sidewalks from Main Street, and it was just the right thing to do to connect these two areas, you know, with a walking path. So that's good on sidewalks and paving, and we hopefully to be done, and if anyone's listening, driveways, they're always the last of connections. People's driveways need to be, you know, milled in together with the road, so I mean, that happens after all the paving's done, and that, and everything will be done. Line painting, you know, with the weather, if it doesn't get cold, we'll at least get the new roads painted with, you know, center lines and fog lines and all that, so we'll get all that done this year. So we can move into PFAS plant. Brief update, Wells 1 and 2, the De Angelis Plant is up and running. It's been up and running for almost 25 days now. We, as a town, started our first testing. We just did that at the beginning of the month, as were required by the DEP. Haven't got those results back. Usually when you take a PFAS sample, it takes almost 25 to 30 days before you get anything back. So hopefully, maybe when I come again, we better be saying that we continue with no, you know, non-detective, any of the PFASs. The only setback that we've had, the, I'm not supposed to help, the Conservation Commission have come out and they've, they're actually putting us through a little bit of a wringer here, and they want some work that needs to be done. We're going to meet with them tomorrow. Some of it could be extremely expensive, but as time goes on, I'll keep you updated. I mean, luckily, we do have the funds there. If there's a stabilization of one of the slopes going from the top of the hill where the building, where the pre-existing building was, and where the new building's sitting, they want us to stabilize that hill, and we'll report back. Again, we're meeting with them tomorrow, and they want some different plans, as-built plans, to be redesigned, and again, that could be an expensive proposition, but I will, you know, report through the Town Administrator and keep you abreast on that as time goes on. So what I would, here tonight for, we're asking for two more, and I think, I explained this at the beginning, I don't know how many, I think you're all here, when we first started explaining the process, usually the Permanent Building Committee would oversee this project, and they would appropriate these funds. You are the Permanent Building Committee for this project, so we have to come back for the, you know, the cost for the, you know, these items. And one is a Skyjack electric scissor lift. We've had one on site, it was rented through this entire process when the building was being built. There is no way that we can get to the top of the tanks if, you can't even put a ladder up to top of them, because they, they round off. The only way that we can get, if there's any type of maintenance need to be done in the three-story building, is with a scissor lift. This unfortunately will not assist us with, you know, the town, we asked for the, I forget, was that other type of lift?
It was like a boom lift.
A boom lift. I mean, this isn't, this isn't anything like that. But we'll be able to use it in this plant, and then, you know, if the other plant goes through, we'll need it for that also. And it can be used for, you know, if the school needs it for the gymnasium lights being changed, it can be moved around for stuff like that. So we did get three bids for this, and the lowest bid came in at $19,879. And then outfitting the building, we need shelves, we need, we need desks for the inside. All that was cut out of the original design. When we knew that we had to get contingency, we took everything out and left the contingency. Now that the contingency is at a base of, as of today, of $279,464, we're trying to add a few things. We're not going crazy with nothing, and that's why we're coming back and letting you know. I think after this, after the Conservation Commission, with that final report, there were two small change orders that the contractor's putting in, less than $10,000, you know, we should be all set. I mean.
I have just a little question. I already know the answer, but I'm going to say it, because maybe somebody wants me to ask this question. So a boom lift couldn't be used?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, it's too, it's too big for the inside of the building.
Got it.
I think that I, I hope you got the picture of the little one.
Yep.
And you've probably seen it. You probably have one.
Yeah.
I have one.
Yep.
I have two. Yeah, it's pretty small. It's just a one or two-person lift.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
You motioning?
I think so, thank you.
All right. I move that the board approve the purchase of a Skyjack electric scissor lift from Starlift Equipment Company in the amount not to exceed $19,879, and two heavy-duty shelving units from Algonquin Products Company in an amount not to exceed $4,430. To be funded with contingency funds from the PFAS Treatment Plant Project and used at the PFAS Treatment Facility, and to authorize the Town Administrator to sign on the town's behalf.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to authorize the purchase of Skyjack electric scissor lift from Starlift Equipment Company, not to exceed $19,879, and two heavy-duty shelving units from Algonquin Products, not to exceed $4,430. To be funded with the contingency from the PFAS Treatment Plant and used for the PFAS Treatment Plant Facility, and authorize the Town Administrator to sign on the town's behalf. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passed unanimously.
Thank you. We're going to keep Karen writing those.
What?
We have to keep Karen writing these.
Right. Yeah.
Yes.
They laughed when I wanted these mo, they laughed when I wanted these written.
Yeah. No, I, I don't know if I can go back to the old way.
You can't go back.
Which is why I copiously took notes.
Once you go.
Lisa Harden, Town Clerk. I just want to make a comment about this scissor lift. John Engler has talked about needing something to get to the ceiling of the gym in this building to be able to make some repairs. So it sounds like this might be something.
Yeah, this could help on, you know, to do occasional projects in here.
And we might be able to even get inside and clean the inside of the library windows.
Oh, excellent.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Guess we're done with him tonight. So the next we're on to, I've lost the agenda. I'm so fascinated with the, with the, with the motions.
I see that.
Yeah. And we, okay, Mike, I guess.
Yes, this is mine.
I was looking for Bob. I don't know why.
So the town of Millis has been awarded two community compact grants. As you know, every other year, the town is eligible to receive grants to this program. It's usually around $100,000. First grant is $45,000 to hire a professional consultant to provide assistance to the town in completing the process of centralizing all human resource functions of all municipal and school operations in the town of Millis. As the boards are aware, we've been working on really professionalizing our human services, our human resource functions. Victoria's doing a great job as our benefits administrator in doing that and Karen as our human resource manager. And we're still working with the school on consolidating those functions and streamlining those, but we think there's certainly still some work to be done and this will help us tremendously in being able to really complete that work. We hope we can have that done in the next 12 to 18 months. So that's the first grant. The second one is $60,000 for consulting assistance in creating a climate action plan. At the most recent annual town meeting, an article was passed establishing a net zero energy goal by 2050 for the town of Millis. Core part of that goal is to develop a net zero climate action plan that outlines specific strategies and sets measurable, attainable, and realistic energy targets to get Millis to net zero energy by 2050. Fortunately, we do not have the staff and volunteer capacity to properly establish a plan without the assistance of an energy engineering consultant to develop our community action, our climate action plan. So this, this should, should get us there in working with our energy committee and other boards and committees in the town. So I'm recommending that the board vote to accept both grants this evening and authorize me to sign them on your behalf.
Okay. I move that the board vote to approve two community compact grants as follows. Human resources centralization in the amount of $45,000 and a climate action plan consulting for $60,000 and to authorize the town administrator to sign both agreements on the town's behalf.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, flip the page. It's been moved and seconded to approve the acceptance of two community compact grants for human resource and a climate action plan and to authorize the town administrator to sign both agreements on the town's behalf. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously.
Great, thank you very much.
All right. Next item is the vote to add a debt exclusion ballot question for the Tri-County School Building Project. We talked about this at great length at the tri-board meeting and I assume that was televised. I believe it was, if people have commented on it. So, so basically, I started this evening by talking about it a little bit. I'll give a little bit more of a recap if that's okay and then we can continue on through. So the Tri-County construction does not behave like a typical Proposition 2 and 1/2. The way that the VOTEC school funding mechanism was created, it was done prior to the existence of Prop 2 and 1/2. So the school, Tri-County School, can come in and just ask for our agreement to build a $280 million school. If we give our agreement, that's great. The problem then becomes ours, how do we fund it? They'll send us a bill, that's not gonna be an issue, but we have to come up with the money to pay for that bill. And right now, if we have, right now, we currently have 36 children at Tri-County. The bill is based on the number of children that attend the school. We've typically been in the 50 to 60 range, so 36 is very, very low. I think that has to do with COVID, coming out of that and people not signing up for it. But, but if we're in the 50 range, which is where we've spent a lot of our, our history, that would cost the town about $620,000 a year. Now, there's two ways to fund that. We can cut the budgets by $620,000 a year, which would be almost catastrophic.
How many years?
It's a 30-year. It's a 30-year process. And the number changes each year. So one year, it might be 600,000. The next year, we could have 80 children go and it would cost us $1 million. So it changes year by year. If five kids go, it's $60,000. So it just, it just varies wildly. This, but this funding needs to be covered, this, we'll, we will be invoiced, we will get that as an operational bill each year. There's two ways to do it. We either do it through an override or we do it through budget cuts. We're going to put, and we're considering tonight, putting an override on the same day as the school vote. This would be more like a traditional override vote that the town has for Clyde Brown, the police station, library, all those, where we voted the project and the funding. Right now, as I said, the project is divorced entirely from the funding mechanism. Typically, a few hundred people come out, they're all in favor of VOTEC education, it passes, and then three to four years later, you have to figure out how you're paying for it. We're going to ask you on the same day, October 24th, how are we paying for it? And we will have a vote on an override that day. To put it in perspective, a 50 children enrollment, which is our typical, would cost the typical home $180 per year. And that's based on a half-million-dollar home, $507,000 home. So that's about $180 per year. I'm rounding a little bit, but you get the idea behind it. If it goes up to a 80 kids attending, it goes to $288 a year. So that's the range we're talking about. We didn't think it was fair to have people come out and just say, yes, I want a school and not have to agree to pay for it. So that's the discussion tonight, whether we put that override on the ballot. I'll take comments from others on the board as well.
You got anything?
I think you said it all.
Okay. All right. All right.
Yeah, I think that it, I think that if a person comes to vote on October 24th and the only thing in front of them is whether or not they want the school, they would probably think that the money is in there somewhere. I would think that.
Yeah.
I would think, I would, I would just think that. Well, okay. But if you lay it out, then it at least gives the voter the information to say, not only do I want the school, but I may have to lose some other services in town to pay for me wanting that school. And giving them all the information is always the right thing to do.
Right. So I'm going to move the, the vote now, we can have a little more discussion about it. And if this does pass, I'm going with the assumption it's going to pass, but let's make a motion and vote on it.
Okay. Uh-oh. Do I have a motion in here for that?
You do.
Top one.
Top one.
Oh, there it is. I already checked it off because I knew you were gonna do that. I move that the board vote to place a debt exclusion ballot question for the Tri-County School Building Project as provided by bond council on an election ballot for an election to be held on October 24th, 2023.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to place a debt exclusion ballot question for the Tri-County School Building Project as provided by bond council on an election ballot for the election to be held on October 24th, 2023. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, what I'd like to say about this also, this isn't discussion on the vote, this is just more information about it. Couple things that are different about this one. The town is not borrowing the money. So this will not go to town meeting. This is just authorizing to pay. Town meeting gives the town the authorization to borrow. We're not the borrowing authority. The school, the Tri-County School, is the borrowing authority. So, so this will be the only case I can ever imagine where an override would go through without a town meeting vote. So this will be the vote on this, at this point. A couple other things. We're not gonna, as a select board, I don't know that we will officially take a position in favor or opposed to the school project. We will have a meeting, we're gonna discuss that in a little bit, where we'll discuss the project a little bit more. But I think it's very important that people realize, if you're in favor of this school project, you almost need to vote yes for the override as well because if you, if you vote to build the project, we're gonna cut 600 to 900,000 each year from the, from the town's budgets if we don't have an override to fund it. If you're opposed to this school project, you'll need to show up and vote no to both, probably, both the override and the, and the, the project. You can get tricky and vote no for the, the project and yes for the override, but it's really simple. If you're opposed to it, you need to show up and vote no opposed to it. Because we are but one of 11 towns. If we have, and I was reading one up in the North Shore area, about 1,000 people turned out and 840 voted yes on it, so it passed. But that's because they never put the money in. You know, you don't talk about approving the money. So we're trying to drive, honestly, we're trying to drive turnout. We want a fair representation, whether this town wants to build and pay for this school, not just build it. It's like me asking my kid if he wants a car or somebody asking me if I want a car. Sure, you want the car. Do you want to pay for the car? That's the second part of that. So right now, Tri-County is asking us if we'd like the really nice school. And it is a nice school and it's a needed school. There's reasons that it needs to happen. People quibble about the size and the cost, but there's reasons why something has to be done there. And that's okay, as long as we agree we're paying for it. And that's why we're putting these two things together on the same override. So if you are opposed to paying for a new Tri-County school, please show up and vote no on it. If you're in favor of paying for the Tri-County school, please show up and vote yes to both.
Now, to be fair, one could come and vote for the school and no for the override and say, I want the cuts.
Yep.
Okay. Right? And, but number two, just a clarification, there will be two ballots.
Yes.
Correct? Not one with the two questions.
Right. The state law, the way it's written, and again, this law was written 60s, 70s? Yeah.
In the early 70s, I think.
Early 70s. Yeah, this law says that there has to be between four and eight hours of voting, no more than eight, no less than four, which is just crazy in my world. But, and secondly, we can't add or put anything else on the school's ballot. So there will be a second ballot that you'll be handed and you'll have to vote on both. Or you'll have the opportunity to vote on both. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Lisa Harden, Town Clerk. I just want to add a comment about the two ballots, that if you are opposed to paying for it, it won't help to just vote on the town override part of it. Because the approval to approve the school building is on a different ballot. And if you don't go on there and say no, that's based on however many people say yes. So you need to really vote on both.
Right.
Right. Thank you, Lisa.
Don't get cute.
Yeah. And also, this is really, I can't stress this enough, it's not just our town making the call on this one. It is going to be the 11 other towns. So if, if 1,000 people in Millis turn out and vote no and 1,100 people in the other 10 communities, 110 people in each of those other communities vote yes, it passes. And nobody votes no, it passes. So that's what we have to keep in mind, that we are but one of 11 and our town doesn't control this. The other towns are going to have a say in it and they are, in many cases, in all cases, larger than ours. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. The next question is a discussion of community outreach for Tri-County School Building Project. So now we've decided we're putting it on the ballot. We've decided that we should probably have a meeting about it somehow to invite the community. Any suggestions on how to do that? I would, I would think September 27th, October 4th, and there, that's a Wednesday item. If we got together at a special meeting and invited Tri-County, if they're available, we can see what days they're available too. But please, any thoughts?
Well, Jane Harden is Millis, right?
Yes.
She's a Millis person, she's on the board.
Yes.
Well, I think we could get her here, if you think, I think that's a good idea. Do you think it's a good idea to have her here?
I think that's a great idea.
I mean, she should definitely be here. I don't know if there's a more coordinated effort through the school, though, that they'd want to send. Do you know what I mean? Like from some committee or something?
Right.
I know Jane's our representative.
Right. We could ask her.
We should definitely.
Or you want to go direct.
Let's ask her to be our liaison with them. That's what she's paid the big bucks for.
Yep. I agree.
It's an uncompensated position.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I just want to add. Didn't you leave a minute ago?
No, that was Jim. He ran.
Excuse me? I was at, Lisa Harden, Town Clerk. I was at a meeting yesterday at Tri-County and Karen McGuire, the superintendent, I forget her title.
Yes.
Is very much interested in coming to Millis to give a presentation. And I would just say, you might want to reach out to her office, but the sooner the better would be good.
Yeah.
Before October 4th, maybe, because there is voting by mail and people will start voting a couple weeks before the 24th. So we want, we need to get some, and in addition to just a meeting.
Yeah.
We need like a flyer or something.
Yeah, I'll draft a letter after this meeting, I'll try to get it, I will, I will discuss it, but with, because we're not gonna have a meeting until the 25th. So my question would be, would you be comfortably drafting an outline speaking for what we discussed tonight? I don't think there's a mechanism for approval prior to that. And we can put that on the town website.
Oh, okay.
I won't sign it as the select board, I'll sign it as select board chair. And I'll, I'll put the disclaimer, this hasn't been reviewed or looked at by the other committee members, but I'm not going to go too far off script of what was said tonight. You know?
Okay, are you, are you talking about a flyer or just posting something on the website?
Well, it could be on the website or maybe send.
I mean, I think the short term would be posting on the website, putting it on the town's Facebook.
Yeah.
And, and you know.
Sending it out with that email blast.
Right.
Okay.
That'd be the easiest, quickest way to get it out in the community.
Why don't I try to draft something for Monday?
Okay.
And then on Monday, the 25th, we can, as a group, edit, ratify, change if we want to send something else out, if that's okay with, with this group.
Yep, that's fine with me.
Okay, so, okay.
And then let's try to invite Karen McGuire in.
What dates did you mention?
I was thinking twenty-fifth is a Monday, or twenty-seventh is a Wednesday, if we wanted to do something off-cycle. I don't know how the agenda looks for the twenty-fifth yet.
Right.
But, let's squeeze, let's, let's, let's put her at the top of the agenda on the twenty-fifth. Try to build that up, I'll put that in the letter.
Okay.
We were already booked that night for a meeting, anyway.
Yeah.
If she can't make it, we'll try to find another day that accommodates. Okay?
All right.
Mr. Chair, I think the board of selectmen or the town administrator sends out a postcard to all houses to announce an election?
Yes.
A special election?
But it, but it has limited information on it.
But if, if we could get that out sooner, I mean, usually it only goes out a week before the election. I'm just saying, if you could send, if it's possible to send it out earlier.
We're trying to get it out two weeks before.
You know, and you could put at least a sentence for more information, they could go to that.
Yeah.
Okay, we can talk more about that at your next meeting on the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, let's, let's talk about that on the twenty-fifth, that's a good point. That's, and then that'll be more of a group consensus. All right. So that'll give us a meeting, and we'll continue to talk about it in each of, each of our meetings leading up to that point. Be three of them before the twenty-fourth, okay?
Yep.
All right. Approval intermunicipal agreement for sealer and weights of measure. We better approve it, because we appointed her.
I know, right?
I thought we were putting the cart before the horse there, but I was, I was rolling the dice.
Yep, it was a leap of faith.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, as my memo states in your packet, we've been working with the towns of Medway and Medfield over the past four to six months to establish a regional sealer of weights and measures. As part of that process, we've negotiated the attached intermunicipal agreement between all three towns. The agreement has a three-year term and has been reviewed and approved as deformed by town council. The select boards of Medway and Medfield have already approved the agreement. So I am recommending that the board vote to approve and sign the intermunicipal agreement with the towns of Medway and Medfield for a regional sealer of weights and measures.
Okay, I move that the board vote to approve the intermunicipal agreement for the sealer of weights and measures with the towns of Medway and Medfield as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the intermunicipal agreement with Medway and Medfield for the sealer of weights and measures. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, passed unanimously. Thank goodness. How we'd undo that first one.
I was nervous.
Yeah. All right. Next item we have is the contract with Community Impact Inc.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've had an agreement with Community Compact Inc., and Impact Inc. in regards to providing certain social services to the community, and recommending that, and we have funding for another six-month agreement with Community Impact Inc. So I'm recommending that the board vote to approve the six-month agreement, which will take us through the end of the calendar year.
And this is the townwide social worker?
That's correct.
From the host community agreement funds?
Yes.
All right, motion?
I move that the board vote to approve a contract with Community Impact Inc. for a period ending twelve thirty-one twenty-three as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the contract with Community Impact Inc. for the period ending twelve thirty-one twenty-three. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passed unanimously. All right. Board and community liaison updates. I'll start, I went to the tri-board meeting. No. Aaron, do you want to kick us off?
I don't think I have anything.
Okay.
I went to the, the energy committee meeting, that was good. So they're talking about, so Medfield, well, a lot of towns have put together this beautiful packet of information on how they're going to get to net zero by two thousand and fifty, and Millis wants to do the same. So we've been reading a bunch of them, and, you know, not to recreate the wheel, trying to see how, which template we can use and what information we need, and we are seriously putting, they are seriously putting together their, their, I don't know.
Document.
Yeah, document. And, and, you know, a lot of it, not for nothing, but a lot of it's policy, right? Some of it's what we've, what we have done, you know, solar and the way we're trying to now work with everybody together to save, and all the agreements we have with gas and electric and all that kind of stuff. But then trying to move forward with EV vehicles and more solar, and getting rid of gas appliances and things like that. So it's interesting, to say the least, but as I say, it's, it's a lot of policy. You know, we would like, we think, you know, we want, and that's what all the towns are doing, because you, I mean, you really can't put anything in stone, but I think they're doing a great job.
Great.
Anyway.
I actually attended the capital planning committee, loads of fun. We've started prioritizing, not a lot of items coming in. PFAS plant is on the list, library lighting's back on the list, because we deferred that last year. Not too many new things. We're very excited to see pictures of the vacuum truck, or whatever it's called, that Jim Kay went for water sewer and...
To clean the catch basins?
Catch basins.
Back truck.
Back truck. Thank, there you go. I looked one up, so. So that's, and so there's really no surprises there, there's not a lot of new items. We are going to send the list back to the various department heads to see if there's any cleanup they can do to get rid of some items that may no longer be relevant. They're very good about telling us what to add, but not so good about telling us what they no longer need. So we'll be looking at that and see what can be removed. And the other one was the MBTA zoning, and the tri-board, Jody did a nice job summing that up for their committee report, so there'll be more to come on that, but the big important thing is the survey's coming out. All right. And we have one last item, the water and sewer commitments. We have no minutes.
Nope.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Be recommending that the board approve the water sewer commitment to the collector for August of two thousand and twenty-three in the amount of two thousand one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty cents, and to approve the quarterly bill run commitment for the first quarter of FY twenty-four in the amount of one million, two thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents.
Okay. I move that the board approve the water and sewer commitments to the collector for August two thousand and twenty-three in the amount of two thousand one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty cents, and the commitment from first quarter FY twenty-four in the amount of one million, two thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the water and sewer commitments to the collector for August two thousand and twenty-three in the amounts of two thousand one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty cents for the commitment from first quarter FY twenty-four and the, I'm sorry,